All right, folks. Well, good afternoon. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Great to see y'all. Got quite a few folks in the crowd, so it's always good to see folks at our meeting. And we're gonna go ahead and start the pledge of allegiance, and I am gonna select. Has anybody led us in the pledge, our student board members yet? All right, so Savannah, you have? So Anna, Anna, I'm gonna have you lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Is that okay? All right, so we have Anna Victoria Chavez, one of our student board members. Please stand.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite.
All righty, thank you so much. We appreciate that. We will now move on to 1.3, approve of the agenda.
I'll move.
It is move by Ms. Alexander, second by Vice President Tillman. Any discussion or items to be pulled? All right, let's go ahead and vote on the agenda, and I will start with our student board members, starting with Ms. Victoria Chavez.
Aye.
Ms. Eden Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Vazquez.
Aye.
Thank you very much, ladies, and then the rest of us will vote electronically. Ms. Alexander, was that correct or no? All right, can we get a correction on Ms. Alexander? She did mean to say yay, and it was an abstention on that. All right, thank you very much. So motion carries. We'll move on to 2.1, 2.0 actually, special presentations and recognitions. 2.1, resolution declaring California Clean Air Day, and that will be Ms. Sylas.
Thank you. Good evening. Whereas it is vital that San Bernardino City Unified School District protect the health and well-being of children who are the future of our community, and whereas air pollution contributes to higher rates of cancer and heart and lung disease which adversely affect health, and whereas individual actions such as not idling vehicles, walking or biking to work, carpooling and not burning hazardous or inappropriate materials such as painted or treated wood can directly improve air quality in our region. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education declares October 4th, 2023 as California Clean Air Day and encourages all schools and offices to participate in activities that promote clean air for all and raise awareness of the detrimental effects of air pollution. So moved.
It is move by Ms. Sylas, second by Vice President Tillman. Any discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Ms. Victoria Chavez.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Ms. Eden Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Vazquez.
Aye.
Thank you very much, ladies. The rest of us will vote electronically. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 2.2, resolution recognizing October as Character Education Month, and that's gonna be read by one of our student board members, Ms. Anna Victoria.
Aye. Oh, my bad, my bad.
That's okay, 'cause I, you will. Just kidding.
Whereas the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District welcomes the opportunity to proclaim that the present and future well-being of our society requires an involved, informed, and caring citizenry with good character, and whereas character development is first and foremost an obligation of families, but that the efforts of faith communities, schools, and youth civic and human service organizations also play a vital role in fostering and promoting good character. And whereas the third week in October, October 15 through the 21st, 2023, is National Character Counts Week, a time to highlight character education and the importance of modeling good character. And whereas October 16 through the 20th, 2023, is Digital Citizenship Week, a time to focus on making safe, ethical, and responsible decisions online. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education joins the California Department of Education in recognizing October as Character Education Month and encourages all schools to ensure that the development of strong moral character and the promotion of responsible ethical and civic-minded behavior are part of this curriculum.
Moved.
Second.
It is move by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Chuhusky. Any discussion? Okay, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on the resolution. I'm sorry, we'll go ahead and start with students. Ms. Victoria Chavez.
Aye.
Ms. Eden Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Vazquez.
Aye.
All right, my apologies. The rest will vote electronically. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 2.3, resolution recognizing October as Filipino-American History Month, and that will be read by Vice President Tillman.
Thank you, President Dr. Wyatt. Whereas Filipino-American History Month became federally acknowledged in 2009 when the Senate of the 111th Congress passed a formal resolution to recognize Filipino-American history throughout the month of October. And whereas Filipino-Americans are the second-largest Asian-American group in the country and third-largest ethnic group in California, and Filipino-Americans have played a critical part in the history and culture of both the United States and California. And whereas October is significant in Filipino-American history because it marks the first recorded presence of Filipinos in what is now the United States when, on October 18, 1587, Filipino sailors came ashore from the Spanish Galician Nuestra Sonora de Esperanza and landed in the Morro Bay area of California. And whereas Filipino-American History Month highlights the economic, cultural, social, and patriotic contributions Filipino-Americans have made in countless ways toward the development of our state and nation and provides an opportunity to examine Filipino-American's history and culture. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District does hereby recognize October as Filipino-American History Month and calls upon schools, educators, and the community to celebrate the history and culture of the Filipino-Americans and their historic contributions to the nation by observing the month with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs. So moved.
Second.
It is move by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Alexander. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote to our students. Ms. Victoria Chavez.
Aye.
Ms. Eden Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Vazquez.
Aye.
All right, the rest of us will vote electronically. Thank you very much.
Whereas October is National Bullying Prevention Month.
Not yet, no, almost there, sorry. My apologies. All right, motion carries on 2.3, and then 2.4, resolution recognizing October as National Bullying Prevention Month, and that will be read by Ms. Eden Ochoa. Now you can.
Whereas October is National Bullying Prevention Month and the first Monday of October is World Day of Bullying Prevention, making October as a time to raise awareness of bullying, which can include verbal, physical, and cyberbullying. And whereas nationwide, about 20% of students report being bullied, with 23% of African-American students, 23% of Caucasian students, 16% of Hispanic students, and 7% of Asian students reporting being bullied at school. And whereas children who are bullied are at increased risk of depression, anxiety, sleep difficulties, lower academic achievement, and dropping out of school. And whereas children who witness bullying are also at increased risk for tobacco, alcohol, or other drug use, has increased risk of depression and anxiety, are more likely to skip school. Therefore, be it resolved, the San Bernardino City Unified School District will work to develop implements and monitor policies and programs that foster a positive school climate. And be it further resolved, the Board of Education recognizes October as National Bullying Prevention Month and October 2nd, 2023, as a World Day of Bullying Prevention and proclaims its commitment to the prevention of bullying by educating students and staff, exploring solutions, and offering support to students.
Second.
Move by Ms. Chuhusky, second by Vice President Tillman. Any discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on 2.4. Ms. Victoria Chavez.
Aye.
Ms. Eden Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Vazquez.
Aye.
All right, thank you, ladies. The rest will vote electronically. Thank you very much. Okay, motion carries. Move on to 3.0, public comments. 3.1. This is the only time to poke. We'll have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject-matter jurisdictions such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from our ability to make intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. And we will move on to our first public comment, and that is Mr. Gil Navarro. Welcome, Mr. Navarro.
Good evening, Board President, Vice President, Superintendent Ariano, and other board members. My name is Gil Navarro. Federal regulations refer to me as a non-attorney representative, but I guess on the streets here in San Bernardino, I'm just an education advocate. And it gives me great honor to speak here tonight before all of you because you have decision-making with over 52,000 students. That's amazing. Imagine what you can do in helping those 52,000 students become successful. To me, that's your function in being on this board, in my opinion. But I'm here for a couple reasons. I just wanted to, when we were here last few weeks ago and we had speakers speaking to behalf of Evelyn, I never did introduce Evelyn to you. But here on my right. Sitting there, you watch that. This is Evelyn Jordan Herrera. And. So now, we were very fortunate that we had a hearing panel in the expulsion that we ended up prevailing on the expulsion proceedings. So what is our next step? Helping Jordan make up her 20 F's that she got in the ninth and 10th grade. Now, you would say, how could somebody get 20 F's? Well, in special ed, if there was a concern, the first thing you would do, in my opinion, is ask the student, what's going on? Now, I talked to the case carrier, and I asked him that question. He says, well, she's ditching school. She's not turning in assignments. I said, did you ask her why? He said, no. So, number two, as you know, that in special ed, you have IEP meetings. And I asked him, how come you didn't request an IEP meeting to get the family involved officially so you could work out something to find out how you could assist her? And he didn't have an answer for that. So now, we're stuck with that responsibility of helping her get 20 F's. And so I want you to be aware that that's our challenge, and we'll meet that challenge to make sure that things are in place to give her that support. And then, next to Jordan is her mother, Elvia. You better speak. And then next to the mother is Mahaly. She's an incoming eighth grader at Curtis Middle School. Now, when I spoke with Mahaly, I could hear in her voice, in my opinion, a lack of education for her age academically. So I went through her file, and I have here 45 pages, two-sided, where it documents since the first grade, she was failing. And as you know, how you promoted to consideration, which means they're gonna promote you, but you're not at grade level because normally they want her to be with her friends. And what's a shame is on that document, it specifically states what the areas of concern with. Now, I don't know if you're familiar with EL students, but when you start in kindergarten, generally you're level one until you work your way up to, for the first five years. Well, guess what? She's still at a level one. It's very well documented in these records that she's struggling every year. On the report card, the teacher indicates she's struggling, not meeting state standards. Now, she's a regular student. Why wouldn't somebody want to convene, you know, an SST meeting to find out what's going on? They never did. And when I asked the principal, he was very defensive. And so that's the challenge we have now, helping Mahaly get to grade level. So my recommendation, if you could create a procedure, a policy, that any new student that comes to the school, somebody checks in the records. It's all there. You don't need a bachelor's degree or a doctorate to look at the records, and it's all there, how she's been struggling since kindergarten. So help us out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. All righty, our next public speaker, public comment, is Mr. Daniel Jivangi. Jivangi? Hopefully I got that right? All right. Jivangi, all right, there we go. Better. Jivangi. Welcome, Mr. Jivangi.
Welcome, board and community members. Today I came to talk about an important topic to me and to the community in general. And I just wanted to give you all some notes about this topic. And this topic is the Airport Gateway Specific Plan. I don't know how much you all have heard about it, what you've heard about it, but I'll give you some high-level notes and then a potential recommendation. So this project is roughly around Third Street to Sixth Street, north and south, from Tepi Canoe to the 210. So it's a large rectangle north of the airport. And what's gonna happen is it's slated for logistics industry development. The problem at the moment is that it's introducing multiple truck routes on Tepi Canoe. I think Central Victoria, there's a couple few other streets, and these streets happen to pass by multiple elementary schools, a high school, a middle school, everything like that. And just this meeting, it was voted, you know, we're gonna vote for a Clean Air Day on October 4th. So I think this needs special looking into. Another fact about the project is that it's about 600-plus acres, roughly one square mile, between San Bernardino and Highland. Most of the land is in the city of Highland. And another problem that faces the community is that there's about 2,300 residents in the city of Highland. And because of this project, they will need to be relocated. Unfortunately, the city of Highland said, no, we don't want to relocate anyone. We don't want to be on the hook for the service. That is a little bit of a big issue because it puts the burden on the developers themselves. One of the developers that has got activated in purchasing up some of the residential lots is PAMA Management. I don't know how much you've heard about them, but if you Google them, you'll find some not-so-good things said about them. With this project, it's displacing 4% of the city of Highland. And if you look at the city of Highland and San Bernardino's housing element plans, and you look at some of the demographic information, coincidentally, this project happens to be developing on primarily Latino and Black neighborhoods. And even if you look at their truck routes, where are they going through? Primarily Latino and Black neighborhoods. So this is a little bit of a problem. My recommendation and request would be for the school district to maybe have some words with the Inland Valley Development Agency, with the city of San Bernardino, with the city of Highland, to see if there can be better advocacy done for the residents that live there and to give the opinions of the school district. Because this will affect the school district in terms of enrollment, in terms of truck routes, you know, pollution going in and out of the area, even for children's safety with, you know, little kids, you know, like kindergartners, first graders. My neighbor on the top of my street, it's a busy intersection. He got ran over twice. Sometimes he's not always paying attention. He's running in the street. So, you know, we also had to look out for that as well. So basically, outside of the advocacy, I would also like to see if maybe, potentially, you could look into recommending, can we scale this development back? So that way, it's not as intrusive, it's not on residential land. And maybe we can have some of these truck routes. We do need them, but do they need to be so extensive, going rumbling and rattling across multiple streets? Maybe it could be more limited. Maybe you could work with Caltrans, Cal State's Transportation Department, city and county civil engineers to work out a better plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. All righty. Oh, excuse me, sir.
It's just a clarifying, yes. It's just a clarifying question with regards to the displacements of families. Is this something that's already been approved through? Because you mentioned student enrollment. Has that already been approved, or is that something that has not officially been approved yet?
So it's a little bit in limbo. So what had happened was that the IVDA kind of proposed this whole project saying, hey, you know, we're gonna put this together for the city of San Bernardino and Highland as a plan for you all to adopt simultaneously. The city of San Bernardino, I think, has not approved it because of some issues with the project. And now it's a little bit in limbo. It sounds like the city of Highland is still kind of adamant about no relocation. You know, we still want to power through with the project. However, it's not official word. I'm not sure exactly where it is because there has to be approval on the environmental, you know, report. So it's kind of in limbo right now, so.
Thank you for that. And I guess for the district, I'd like to see if our students or our population would be impacted by this. But thank you.
Vice President Tillman.
I just want to clarify. I don't know if people are listening, but you said no relocation. What you're really saying is that the city of Highland doesn't want to do the relocation itself. They want someone else to do it, right?
Correct, and they have a financial vested interest, by the way.
Thank you.
All right, thank you again. All right, our next public speaker is Ms. Fatima. Come on up. Welcome.
There we go. Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Wyatt, Board President Dr. Wyatt, Superintendent Ariano, board members. Welcome to the new trustees. I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you. Welcome, and of course, to the community. My name is Fatima with the California Charter Schools Association. We represent the largest number of the almost 1,300 public charter schools in the state of California, and we represent 100% of the charter schools authorized by you, San Bernardino City Unified. And we're really excited to share with you our support for the charter policies before you tonight. The last time we were here, charter school leaders and community wanted an opportunity to provide input before the policies were adopted. Thank you for listening to our voices and allowing our community to provide input on the matter. The policies being proposed tonight are fair, and they're completely aligned with education code and law. We understand the intricacies of being an authorizer and the challenges that come with that responsibility. So we really want to thank all the board members who are part of the charter school committee, as well as the Director of Charter School Services, Ms. Ernestine Hopwood, and her staff for listening to our voices and, you know, hopefully, those are the policies you will be adopting tonight. And should you have any questions, you know how to contact me. And I also wanted to share facts no one asked you for today, no one asked me for today, rather, but that is Happy Latino Heritage Week and Hispanic Heritage Month. And for those of you who don't know, Latino Heritage Week has its roots here in San Bernardino, and it was first proposed by Congressman George Brown, who has ties to this community along with his beautiful family and wife and recently passed, I mean, Ms. Marta Macias Brown. And I just wanted to acknowledge that because now we get to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. And so it had its roots here in the Inland Empire, eventually adopted by California, and then later by the United States. And believe it or not, it wasn't actually adopted until 1968 by President Ronald Reagan. So again, facts no one asked me for today, but I just thought it was really cool that something that now Target and Walmart has t-shirts for had its roots here in the Inland Empire. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Fatima, we have a, oh, sorry, I thought, Vice President Tillman, he said no. But thank you for those fun facts, too. We appreciate that. All right, our next public comment speaker is Christopher Jean. Come on up. John? Is it John?
John.
John. John. I was wondering about that.
Good evening, board members, Vice President and President. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I just wanted to come and address some discrimination that I've experienced with my child at Roosevelt Elementary School. So I created a little log here on the events that took place. Starting July 31st, we got a call from, well, actually, we didn't get a call. On that day, when my wife went to go pick up our children, they were in a dual immersion program. So their native language is not Spanish. So we just kind of wanted to do that as an opportunity for our kids to learn a second language at home. And so by the time my wife picked them up, we got, she said that from the teacher's assistant, they should not be in dual immersion. They should not be in the same class. I have twin boys, so they are in the same class. And it's only one dual immersion class on that campus. And she also stated that dual immersion is for students who know Spanish. Now, I don't know how true that is, but, you know, this is what the comments from their teacher's assistant. So that was July 31st. On August 1st, got a call from CAPS, from the CAPS department. And my son cried himself to sleep. So I don't know why we had to get a call about that, but we got a call. August 8th, my son had an accident, so they called for a change of clothes. Okay. August 9th, the next day, we got a call saying that, this is all happening in CAPS, by the way. My son was pushing his brother. Okay, you know, that's what kids do. They're four years old. So, okay. August 23rd, we got a call from the, also the CAPS staff, claimed that my son was running, running around the field and was running from the other staff, and he hit under the table. Okay, he's four years old, by the way. Okay. We got a call the same day, about an hour and a half later, and the person in the CAPS said that he cannot be in CAPS, and he needs to be picked up. Okay? Now, he's having a rough day, four years old. I think, you know, around 2:00, they kind of get a little bit of sleepy and tired, and, you know, it's difficult transition. But, I mean, he's four years old. Okay. But with that being said, if he can't be in CAPS, I mean, what was the procedure that took place? But with that being said, if he can't be in CAPS, I mean, what was the procedure that took place? There was no meeting between myself, the principal, or anything, so, okay. So my wife reached out to Laura Vega, which is the CAPS coordinator, and she stated that the principal is the only person to allow and remove the child. And so that's when we discovered that. So, again, it's not only that, we had another, I got a text message from Ms. Candy from Roosevelt CAPS. My son was having another rough day, he ran around the field for about 15 minutes. But, you know, there were other staff members that were, you know, chasing after him. So then, by the time he got back into the classroom, he calmed down, he colored, and then he went to sleep. We got another one, Tuesday, September 12th, this is last week. It says, unfortunately Chandler got a referral today, it was time to clean up, and during the transition, you know, he didn't want to, he didn't want to clean up. And so, you know, he's running around, and then he ran under a table, and then after that, he hit his head, or it states right here, he banged his head all over the cabinet, and after a while, sat on the floor, laid down on the yoga mat, and fell asleep. So he had got a referral for that, and we were just basically feel like that he was being targeted, because for whatever reason, we really just don't know, but from the first day, when you tell the kid or the parents that you don't think their kid should be here, I mean, is it just because it's just for Spanish-speaking kids trying to learn English? But why can't this, the English kids learn Spanish? So, that's just kind of what we experienced, I'm sorry if I went over time, but thank you for opportunity.
And Mr. Jean, can you, if you'd like to, it looks like we may have a question from a board member, but when we're done, you could give your contact information to Ms. Ballantag there?
Okay.
And then somebody from the superintendent's office will get in touch with you.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Zaz Medina?
Just more clarifying, because you mentioned that the comment was made during CAPS with regards to dual immersion only being for Spanish speakers, and so is that what you, is that what you were saying?
No, the comment-
Oh, so it was instructional aid?
Yes, instructional aid, yes.
Okay, yeah, no, so I guess the district needs to, we just need to maybe give an update for those that might be hearing this, thinking that this is accurate, which is not.
Okay.
Ms. Vios?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification, actually, I had the same question. All of the other incidents that followed, that you were reading off, were those all specific to CAPS?
Yes, those, yes.
Okay, it was just the one incident with the, okay, thank you.
Ms. Vios, Ms. Grande?
Yes, when they got, when I got home from school, did you ask your son what happened? Did you, did he say anything to you about the day that, why was he running away? Or did he, did he say anything?
Well, he said that he was scared. He was scared that, you know, the adults were chasing after him. Why he started to run, he wasn't specific, but he was scared of the people chasing after him, basically.
Thank you, Ms. Grande, Vice President Tillman?
I'm sure the superintendent has somebody reach out to you to discuss your issues. And thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
And I, well, we should have clarification, I think it's always been dual immersion has been for students both ways. So my children actually attended Roosevelt, I attended Roosevelt, and my daughters were in the dual immersion program also. So it was always meant to be for students also who speak English, but wanted to learn Spanish, both ways. So, but we'll, but we'll get in touch with you, but I appreciate you coming out.
Alright, it looks like one more, Ms. Chahuski?
That's all, I just wanted to clarify that all students are eligible to enroll in dual immersion, no matter their primary language, so that's all.
Thank you so much.
For Jean, thank you very much again. Alrighty, I think that's it for public comments, any, Ms. Cunningham, any virtual comments?
No.
Alright, thank you very much, we'll move on to 5.0, closed session, 5.1, closed session, public comments. This is a time that members of the public can provide an opportunity to directly address the board about any item described under closed session. Do we have any public comments?
There are none.
There are none, alright, we'll move on to 5.2, closed session agenda, we'll go ahead and convene. Oh, my goodness, did I skip one? I did. Thank you for catching that. So we'll have to back up there to 4.1, public hearing and adoption of sufficiency of TK-12 textbooks and instructional materials. So let me go ahead and close our open. Alright. I will now open the public hearing for item number 4.1, public hearing and adoption of sufficiency of TK-12 textbooks and instructional materials. Are there any public comments?
There are none.
Alright, hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. I'll read the resolution and vote. Be it resolved, the Board of Education adopts the resolution for the 2023-2024 school year, and that the San Bernardino City Unified School District has provided each people with sufficient textbooks and instructional materials aligned to the academic content standards and consistent with the cycles and content of the curriculum frameworks.
All moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Chahuski, second by Vice President Tillman, any comments?
I believe that Ms. Vasquez may have one, a question.
Alright, Ms. Vasquez?
Yes, I have a question about the textbooks.
Yes, ma'am.
So, for the textbooks, is it sufficient enough that we are offered the electronic textbooks? If that makes sense, that if electronic textbooks are sufficient enough for schools and not having the textbooks anymore, if that makes sense?
Let Ms. Assistant Superintendent Applegate answer, I know the answer, but.
Yes, good question, thank you, but now in this day and age, yes, our Williams responsibility, there was a lawsuit over textbooks and other things, and the responsibility is fulfilled with the digital versions of all books, except TK, where we still have the large printed big books for the little ones. But yes, we were found sufficient in all areas for all grade levels. Thank you.
Alrighty, great question, Ms. Vasquez. Any other questions? It's a technical one, alright, hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote with our student board members first. Ms. Victoria Chavez?
Aye.
Ms. Inechoa?
Aye.
Ms. Vasquez?
Aye.
Alright, rest of the board, we'll vote electronically now, thank you. Okay, motion carries. We'll go ahead and close, well, actually, I think it was closed, we'll reopen the open session and move on to what I already said once, which was closed session, public comments, which we had none. Then 5.2, closed session agenda, and now we will recess to closed session, thank you. Alright, folks, looks like we have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting back into order, so we keep ourselves on a timely schedule here for everyone and all our guests. So move on to 6.0, action reported from closed session, 6.1, approval of high school vice principal.
All moved.
Oh, I gotta read it real quick, sorry about that. Alright, be it resolved, the Board of Education approves appointment of following employee, Eldridge Espaleta, Espalita? Espaleta, alright. High school vice principal, Cajon High School, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined.
All moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Vios, second by Vice President Tillman, any discussion? Alright, hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote, this will be only adult board members right now. Alright, motion carries, congratulations, Ms. Espaleta, I think he is here tonight, so let's give him a round of applause, real quick, and we'll probably give him another one here in a little bit.
Come on up, sir. The board, I have the pleasure tonight of introducing Mr. Eldridge Espaleta, who's been in education for over 25 years, serving as a guidance counselor, physical education teacher, head coach, dean of students, and currently vice principal. Mr. Espaleta, sorry, places great importance on building relationships with both students and staff, going above and beyond for all students' success, being a champion for both the educators and staff, and focusing on more than just disciplinary matters. And not only that, but wants to serve in the San Bernardino Unified, or San Bernardino City Unified School District community, so I introduce to you Mr. Espaleta.
Alright. Thank you, Dr. Funches, good evening, Board President Wyatt, school board members, Superintendent Ariano, executive cabinet members, student board members, fellow educators, administrators, and members of our community. I am honored and deeply humbled to have been selected as your new vice principal at Cajon High School. I look forward to serving the district, Dr. Bishop, and partnering with the amazing faculty, staff, and all community members to ensure that our students are prepared for their future, be it college and career, or even military-ready upon graduation. Please know that my commitment to excellence and to go above and beyond is in my DNA, and that I cannot wait to get started. So thank you once again for this wonderful opportunity to serve these young people, this district, this community, and for making hope happen. Vaya con Dios till we meet again. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Espaleta, do you happen to have any family with you here this evening?
Unfortunately, they are all working, they're watching online, so.
Alright, we'll wave to them all, congratulations at home, out there in the virtual world. So congratulations again, and welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Alrighty, moving on to 6.2, approval of coordinator, special education, academic instruction. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approved appointment of following employee, Jessica Vial, Vial, welcome, Jessica Vial, coordinator, special education, academic instruction, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined.
All moved.
It's moved by Ms. Vios, second by Vice President Tillman, any discussion? Alright, hearing seen none, let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries, Dr. Funches?
Alright, thank you, once again, I have the pleasure of introducing another manager appointee tonight, who's been with us since 2003, I won't spoil the surprise for talking about who hired her in the district, however, she has served in the role of teacher, math teacher, program specialist, and current vice principal at San G High School. She is committed to ensuring that special education students have access to all educational opportunities afforded to them. She's all things student-centered, she has an excellent track record of supporting teachers and staff. And then finally, she's very skilled and knowledgeable in professional development for our educators. So, Mrs. Vial, I welcome you.
Thank you all so much for your confidence in me, thank you to our board for your innovative leadership. You've guided us through some very tough waters, and other districts look to you for your leadership, so thank you so much. Thank you to our assistant superintendents and our cabinet. I've worked with many of you in different capacities, I've learned a lot from each and every one of you. I'd like to thank Dr. Hawana Lundie for her confidence in my abilities and giving me the opportunity to serve our most special and precious students, and for believing that I can add value to her team. I'd like to thank a few people that have helped me along my journey, starting with Dr. Sandra Rodriguez, who had the, I'll try not to cry, but gave me an opportunity for my first real leadership roles. She saw potential in me when I didn't see beyond the classroom, and she allowed me to serve others and help grow other teachers, and that just became a great passion of mine, as I saw how it affected other students, so thank you so much. Thank you to Ms. Clark, so Ms. Dion Clark, she had the confidence in my abilities and brought me as board as my first administration position. She has a vast wealth of knowledge, which I'm still using today, and I share with the other educators I'm working with. I'd also like to thank my current principal for pushing me to pursue my professional growth and giving me the opportunities to continue. And then I would like to thank Mr. Ariano. You don't realize it, but you took a chance on this girl over 20 years ago, when she had nothing but a math credential, enthusiasm, and eagerness to serve our community. So thank you, sir, I'm very happy to have you back.
Alrighty, congratulations and welcome again, Ms. Vial, appreciate it. And do you have any family here tonight?
I do not, but they are also with you.
They're out there in virtual, alright, so we'll give them the virtual wave, thank you very much. Alright, and congratulations again.
Thank you.
Alrighty, moving on to 6.3, let me make sure, any special notes in there? Expulsion of students. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel based on our view of the panel's findings of facts and recommendations, and orders expulsion of the following student with identification number as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations, and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
All moved, again.
It's moved by Ms. Vios, second by Ms. Chahuski, any discussion? Alright, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries, moving on to 6.4. Be it resolved, the Board of Education authorize a re-admission of the following students with identification number as indicated below to schools of San Bernardino City Unified School District in accordance with the board rules and regulations, and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
All moved, again.
It's moved by Ms. Chahuski, second by Ms. Vios, alright. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries, moving on to 6.5. Petition to expunge, rescind, seal, and record, or modify youth court of expulsion. Be it resolved, the Board of Education authorize expulsion and/or youth court modification, expulsion, or rescinding the following students with identification number as indicated below to schools of San Bernardino City Unified School District in accordance with the board rules and regulations, and in compliance with the Education Code Section 48900 as amended.
Again.
It's moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Chahuski, any discussion? Alright, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries, moving on to 6.6. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of facts of positive youth development, and orders suspension or expulsion of the following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations, and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
All moved, again.
It's moved by Ms. Chahuski, second by Ms. Vios, any discussion? Alright, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries, moving on to 6.7. Other closed session action. Alright, if necessary, any additional items listed on the closed session agenda which require a board vote, whether it be read out early, if a vote was taken in closed session, or a vote taken at this time. So be it further resolved, the Board of Education accepts a notice of recommendation, disciplinary action, and statement of charges to place the following certificated employee on compulsory unpaid leave of absence pursuant to Code Education Code 44940, Case HR-CERT-23-24-1-ER. Vote.
Again.
It's been moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Alexander, any discussion? Alright, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries, moving on to 7.0. Administrative reports and presentations, 7.1, unaudited actual financial report for fiscal report, fiscal year 2022-2023, and I believe that'll be Mr. Comnic. Welcome, Mr. Comnic. Got a little bit of a walk there, and I'll buy some time for you. And good evening and welcome. As well as the rest of the team. As well as the rest of the team.
Good evening, President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Ariano, Executive Cabinet, as well as our community and public. My name is Terry Komnik. I'm the Associate Superintendent of Business Facilities and Operations, and I am fortunate enough to be here this evening to share with the Board our unaudited actuals from 2223. Just as a quick reminder, our unaudited actuals are for the fiscal year 2223. It's required per ed code. It is the annual statement of revenues and expenditures for the preceding year of 2223. It compares our adopted, our estimated actuals, and our unaudited actuals. It includes, this report will include our fund balance, restricted balances, and also a look at our one-time funds. This chart shows the Board a comparison of our general fund revenues to expenditures. I wanted to highlight in that upper right-hand corner the increase in revenue, especially since 2020-2021, which is reflective of the pandemic funds, the ESRS 1, 2, 3, and a variety of other one-time funds that contributed to this increase in revenue, as well as our increase in expenditures to equal those revenues. I also want to show that the difference, particularly in 2223, is an increase in the revenues due to the recognition of our Arts and Music Block Grant, as well as our Learning Recovery and Emergency Block Grant. This chart shows a comparison of our budgeted, estimated actuals and unaudited actuals. I wanted to focus the Board on the three arrowed rows. The first one shows the expenditures from estimated actuals to unaudited actuals at a slight decrease of close to roughly $60 million as a result of a variety of concerns and issues related to supply chain, also not receiving goods prior to June 30th of 2023, as well as some capital costs that did not recognize due to construction delays, and also weather-related delays. The next here I want to point the Board to is the increase/decrease to fund balance of $112 million as a result of increased revenue that was received, but also the actual expenditures not actualizing, therefore causing our ending fund balance to increase from the estimated actuals of $260 to $304. These are in millions of dollars. This slide, I'll take you from top to bottom. The first ring shows the ending fund balance from the previous page, and I wanted to break down on the far-right column the what makes up that $304 million. The first line there below that is $1.7 million, which shows about a $1.5 million increase from estimated actuals. Those are our prepaid, which would be an example of our software that is like maybe a multi-year cost, and we want to make sure that we account for those. The line number four, that next ring, shows our restricted program. So, of that $304 million, $190.5 million is made up within that $304. The remaining funds, about a third of that, is in the brackets below. That includes the Reserve for Economic Uncertainties, textbook adoption, athletic strategic plan, as well as other assignments. This slide is our one-time COVID funding. I just wanted to give the Board a brief overview of the remaining one-time funds that we have. You'll notice on the top line is the SRT2 funds, which have an expiration or a sunset date of, excuse me, September 30, 2023. That would be in a couple weeks. However, of the remaining funds, $5.1 million, they are all accounted for as part of our tech refresh. Those laptops are being delivered. Actually, they started today. They'll move into the 22nd and the 25th. All goods should be received by September 25th. Invoices will be received and processed. We will have no problem making sure that this is paid prior to the September 30th deadline. The remaining funds that you see below that, the $169 million, $4.015 million, are the remaining SRT3 funds. Now, those funds have a sunset date of a year from now, so September 30 of 2024, and a breakdown of those are on this subsequent slide, which shows where the SRT3 funds are strategically placed based on planned activities. This first ring will show you the $5.1 million of SRT2 funds. Just wanted to reassure the Board that those will be zeroed out by the end of this month, so we'll be fully compliant there. The next ring that you see is a $17 million cost item for our transportation. That is, we're using one-time funds for an ongoing cost. Those costs will be shifted over to general funds beginning next year. This next slide shows a bulk of the remaining funds associated with our facilities projects and programs that have already been approved by the California Department of Education. This next ring of expenditures that you see is the second phase of our tech refresh. So, the first phase that we'll complete this month are for the first $15,000. The next $15,000 will be coming from SRT3 funds, and that order will be placed very shortly. The final cost item I wanted to share with the Board is the ring, $1.32 million, and that is aligned with the Board's request for 20 gasoline vehicles that will help offset our depleting fleet of vehicles with our maintenance and operations team. That was also California Department of Education-approved. What I wanted to share with the Board on this slide is a timeline of events forthcoming. After tonight, I will be returning to the Board to share our first interim, and that will be the first look at our adopted budget for 2324, and any revenue and expenditure changes that I can share at that time. Then, in January, we have the Governor's initial take at the budget proposal. Today was, I noticed some good news with regard to the August tax dollars. They're a little bit higher than projected, so that's good news. In March, I'll come back for the second interim report, and then we go to the May revise in May, and then we'll start the public hearing for the 2425 budget. And with that, Board, that is my update for the unaudited actuals for 2223. I'm open for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Komnik, Vice President Tillman.
Just on the timeline, I know that the, I don't know if maybe you mentioned, I just overheard, missed it, because usually the Governor comes out, or the state comes out with some type of projections in January, right?
Yeah, well, the LAO will come out, Legislative Analyst Office will come out, usually November, right around that timeframe. That sets up for the Governor's initial January release. I believe January 10th is the actual date in law.
Yeah, that's usually the start of the kickoff, and where they're saying things potentially going to be where the government wants to spend. On this slide that you have for the $84 million in facilities, I just want to make sure that we have other things lined up in case there are stoppages in the construction process for these facilities that are beyond our control. Because I'm assuming that this money has to be invoiced and expended by the end of this 2023-2024 school year, right?
These funds, sir, that you're referencing, those have to be expended by September 30 of 2024.
Right.
So, almost a full year from now.
Right.
I've been working very closely with Mr. Tom Pace to ensure that we are on track, and we are monitoring. We do have other expenditures that are consistent with SRT3 allowable activities that we, if necessary, can move into and still be compliant.
That's what I want to hear, because we don't want to get to a point where, say, in July or August, we realize we're not on track to spend all this money, and there's no way to do it, so we need to make sure we have something else in line that we can spend the money on.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman, Ms. Alexander.
Thank you. I just wanted to get clarification on the IT refresh in terms of, I guess, the strategic plan, because we have it, is that $5.1 million for how many, do we have a prioritization? Because then for the SRT3, we also have IT refresh, so I just wanted to get clarification how we're going to allocate those funds and roll it out.
Yes, that's a great question, Ms. Alexander. Thank you. Actually, that's total would be for 30,000 units of touchscreen Chromebooks. That will be, first round is going out to, I believe, 22 sites for this month, and we'll be purchasing another 15,000. But that also is inclusive of other devices, including iPads for some of our identified schools that use iPads. It also includes a little bit of tech refresh for our staff.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander, Ms. Viles.
Yeah, just a really quick question on the MNO trucks line on that slide. Did we ever, I vaguely remember having a conversation, are these trucks, I remember we talked about purchasing vans, and I can't remember if that's something that we passed and approved, and is that included in this line item? Do you guys remember that conversation?
I do know it's for 20 vehicles, so I can definitely provide the Board a Friday update that specifies what those 20 vehicles are, and we are working primarily with our local Ford dealer, Fairview Ford, to purchase these items.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Viles, Mr. Chahusky.
Sorry, my mic wasn't on. I think the vans that may be referring to are the ones for family engagement, and I think those were purchased last year separately, and then this is for the refresh of the MNO trucks that were obsolete. Is that the, if that's what I believed?
Yes, ma'am. There are other funding sources, as well as other departments that are benefiting from a vehicle fleet refresh, if you will. I do know that in addition to the SRT3 funds, which were solely dedicated to the MNO, that's the clarification I wanted to research and share with the Friday update for the Board.
Thank you. I was just trying to make sure I wasn't getting confused now.
Got you.
Thank you, Ms. Chahusky, Vice President Tillman.
Actually, Ms. Chahusky, the van was an item I brought up, and I was hoping that we could purchase additional vans that could be used in a motor pool setting so that when sites needed transportation, they could go to the district and just get vans. I know now we probably use, we rent vans from companies in the area, and I hear a lot from sites that they lack the transportation. A lot of sites wanted to have purchased vans for their own specific school, but if we couldn't do that, it would be a good idea just to buy, let's say, 30 or 40 vans, have them stored somewhere, and then as sites need them, they can go and request it for the weekend or that day and use them. The model is, the county's had it for years where they have an actual motor pool, and they allow people to check out vehicles. It's definitely needed within the school district. And for the vans, you would have coaches and teachers who have the license to drive those vehicles, check them out, and use them. Still be a good idea, but it kind of died on the vine, so if we could bring back information, I think it'd be good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Alexander.
Still going to put my plug in for electric vehicles. I realize that this is a replacement, and strategically, we have to replace vehicles within a certain timeframe, and we're using SRT funds, but I still want us to be able to think progressively and to be prepared for whatever comes down the pike by 2035. So, just something to put out there, especially if we're looking at a pool of vehicles, that it might be something to consider.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All righty, thank you very much. I think that's it for Board comments. And that looks like that's it for your presentation. We will move on to the next one. Excuse me real quick there, and that will be 7.2, Purchasing Department's Procurement Process. Can I imagine, Mr. Komnik continuing with you?
Yes. Good evening. Yes, good evening, good, President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Ariano, as well as our Executive Cabinet and our community and public. At the Board's request, several meetings ago, I would, I'm honored to come to the Board tonight to share an overview of our procurement process, kind of the what, why, and how, and how it's associated and used really on a daily basis. The presentation objectives, I will highlight Board Policy and Administrative Regulations, just a brief overview. I'll give a brief overview of the procurement cycle, also touch on the RFP and bid outreach that's done prior to us going out to a bid. I will talk about the bid notification process, so when we're actively going and requesting a proposal or bid, as well as what happens after the bid have been awarded, has been awarded, and then field any questions or clarifications the Board might have. In your packet, you receive the presentation tonight. What I've done is I've just taken an excerpt from the Board policy. However, in the title on each slide for Board Policy 3311, it's a hyperlink to the actual Board policy for the district. In this particular excerpt, I wanted to point out that the district shall, and that key word is "shall," shall purchase equipment, supplies, and services using the competitive bidding when required by law. And that's a critical piece as we move forward in discussing the nuances of putting out bids and then receiving and issuing the award. Next slide is the Administrative Regulations. So, this puts into action basically the Board policy. And again, this is also hyperlinked for the Boards perusing at their leisure. And I pulled an excerpt from this that particularly ties into some of the Board concerns from our previous meeting. Here, I wanted to highlight that the Superintendent Designee shall call bids by advertising in local newspapers of general circulation. And again, it specifies at least once a week for two weeks, as well as post-notices, calling for bids on the district's website and other electric portals. And we happen to do both of those, and I'll show that as we move forward through the presentation. In this slide is just kind of a broad overview of our procurement cycle, starting in the upper right-hand corner about where 1 o'clock would be called Step 1. And really, it all starts with a need. We identify a need and something that we are not capable as an entity to provide, and we seek a service, or equipment, or a product to help us meet our identified need. I wanted to turn to Board's attention to Step 3. At Step 3, when we have determined the need, and depending on the cost threshold, it determines whether we receive multiple quotes, or at that time, we actually go and request bids. So, again, there is a cost threshold that delineates between those two processes. In the next slide, the RFP Bid Outreach. So, this is done as a precursor, if you will. Before we even set up the going-out-to-bid process, we work with our Chamber of Congress to notify of a potential bid that we are going to put into place. We have our list of current approved vendors. These are vendors within our fiscal system that have been previously part, or have either provided services or products in the past. We also use Open Gov Vendor Data Bank, and this is specifically for bids that is hyperlinked on our website that can be used for, no charge, for our prospective vendors who would like to partake in the bidding process. We also have, where our facilities encourages prime contractors to sub projects to our local contractors. And in talking with Laura Cardenas, our Director of Purchasing, working with our Chamber of Commerce and our city of San Bernardino to come up with a collaborative approach to a future workshop opportunity. to come up with a collaborative approach to a future workshop opportunity to educate our, our local vendors, our, our community to those who might be interested in providing a service or a product that is in need for our district. So we're actively working on that and have, we'll have something set up in the near future. In our next slide, it's the fair and open competition. This is the bid notification process. So once we've determined that we're going to go out to bid, we advertise in a newspaper aligned with our administrative regulation, consistent with the time span that was indicated. But we advertise in the San Antonio Sun, The Black Voice, and El Chicano. We also post our RFP bid in Open Gov E Procurement Portal, which is also connected and linked to our district website. We distribute to other applicable vendors identified by the district. These have served the district prior. And then we ensure that any vendor who requests information or any incumbent who has had previous interactions with the district to be notified. In regard to, there was a concern expressed at the, several board meetings ago regarding vendor preference. So we did do our, our due diligence and we researched. I checked with our legal and received advisement that in fact pursuant to Public Code Sections 2011 and 20651, vendor preference is not an allowable activity. So we, we can't give, for, for formal bids, we cannot give, you know, extra points or anything like that. However, we can, and we do encourage our local community members to apply and submit an application by stating on the, the bid release that they should partake if, if they would choose. We focus on our local communities, our minority businesses to, to be part of the bid process. So we do actively do that. That is not in violation with the requirements of preferential bidding. Once the bid has been put out and we're actually now awarding the bid process, and this, this goes to particularly what both Ms. Chihaski and Vice President Tillman had brought up at the meeting is there's a lot of responsibility that's placed on the award, the awardee, if you will. The vendor who, who's not only the lowest but is reasonable and responsible vendor. They have to have a fingerprint and DOJ certification. There has to be certificates of insurance. There are bond requirements that include bid bond, a payment bond, a performance bond that are all part of public contract code. There's also the system for award management where we do a disbarment search and looking for basically two areas of, one is for fraud deception or deceptive practices. Another one would be poor performance or failure to perform. We also, there is also a DIR, Department of Industrial Relations, search. And really what we're doing here is they have to be registered with the DIR because if we do a public works project, it has to be, it must be at prevailing wages for all public construction programs or projects. With that, that is a very broad overview of our process. And if there's any clarifying questions, I have the team here to assist me. But I'd be glad to take any questions you might have.
All righty, Ms. Koenig. Thank you again. Looks like we will start with Ms. Rosales Medina, the Vice President Tillman, and Ms. Alexander.
All right. So I know, thank you so much for the presentation. I was looking at, you mentioned several codes that's not on the presentation. I do see the Administrative Regulation 3311. And I guess I have a question with regards to section codes. What does the actual language look like? I was gonna search it through my phone. But you know, we, we, we could try to look at language as shall, may, must. May is you may. I mean, it's
Optional.
It's optional. So I want to see the actual language of those two sections that you said. It was, I think it was 2011. I tried to catch the other one, just so I can actually look at the language of what it actually says. Like I said, that makes a huge difference with what we're supposed to follow.
Got you. I will, I have the, right here, I can link those in our Friday update, if you prefer. I can, for the entire board.
Yeah, that would be great. And you know, a perfect example, you mentioned even the DIR registration. It says if applicable. So those kind of things. So I don't know if, if, just an example of things that you may or may not. If applicable, what does that mean?
And that would be related to specifically public work projects. So that would, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't apply to maybe equipment, but that would be applicable if it was a public work project that you would have to have the prevailing wage.
Okay. And then with regards to the, thank you for clarifying.
Yes, ma'am.
With the Administrative Regulation 3311, is that our district policy then? Is that how, not policy, but is that our district or is that through, where is that coming from?
That is from our district, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know with our school district, we can always adjust language within our old school district. So I'm looking at what is the mandates that say may, no, that say must and shall through the state and federal government. Because I know at the local level, we can always adjust the language to, to help benefit local companies. So, and then I also, hold on. Relation of requirements. So let me see. So another question of mine, let me make sure I, I see it here, is when you're looking at the, the, I guess, the current process for award, you're looking at lowest reasonable and responsible vendor. And I know there's several steps and qualifications. So who, who makes those, how are those, how are the vendors? Who is it that's administering which ones are the lowest reasonable and responsible vendors? I don't know if that makes sense. Like for instance, who's the one verifying? Because you have all these that match that description. But you know, how do you classify, well, this one's the least and this one is more responsible. So how do you, how do you measure that?
I believe it's, we, we create a rubric, but I will ask Ms. Cardenas to, to expand on that.
Okay.
Yes, we do create a matrix of where we lay out the pricing and we, the highlights and lowlights of the bid and the proposals.
Is your microphone on?
Sorry.
Yes, so we do prepare that rubric, relay it out. And then we notify the lowest responsible bidder and make sure they're able to provide us all of those documents. As we get to do, through that process, we can realize that some of them are not able to. And we move on to the other, next most reasonable responsive lowest bidder.
And then how is that rubric created? Is that through the state or is that something that we created in our district?
We create it based on the proposal that's submitted.
Okay. And then, okay, so then I'll move on. Maybe I might have another follow-up question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Vice President Tillman?
I think the important language here where it says it provides all qualified bidders a fair and equitable opportunity to compete and ensure that district is compliant with the state, federal, and local laws. And I'm sure that our policy makes sure that we're in compliance with those three different areas, right? And those are laws that we have to be in compliance with. And that's what makes, that's what takes away the leeway in terms of what you can and can't do in purchasing. And it's not a whole lot of leeway. I only know because I worked at the county, not a whole lot of give and take. And there's consequences associated with not following the laws, right? So we have to make sure we follow laws. And then the other big thing that hurts a lot of small vendors, these bonds, like a bid bond for 10%, payment bond. These bonds have to be secured at the time that the company is bidding on the project, right?
The bid bond needs to submit it. That's 10%. And that ensures that they're going to execute the contract if offered a contract. After the award, that's when we ask for the payment bond, it's over $25,000. And then the performance bond is up to our discretion. If we feel we need to protect the district additionally, we request that bond.
And I'm seeing where the bid bond poses problems for small businesses. Because if we have a billion dollar contract, that means you have to have $100,000 in a bid bond, which is substantial. And, and you'll hear from small companies that tell you, I have to spend that money just to bid. There's no guarantee I'm going to get to work. So that's when a lot of them fall out and say it's not worth it to them because they could spend the money and still not get the, the work. Even, and sometimes you're not, they could get the money back, but they don't have the cash or even to put the money up. So that's why it causes a lot of problems for smaller businesses that are local. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Alexander?
Thank you. I would like to first say thank you, Mr. Koenig and your staff for putting together the presentation. It was very thorough. I wanted to get a little bit more information related to, first of all, the outreach in terms of the workshop is excellent. I like that. I think that's a great idea in terms of just getting out into the community and educating them what the requirements are. Because I think there's several types of bids. And I think the one I highlighted, that was more for smaller businesses. So I think if we're able to educate the community, maybe there's an opportunity to increase the interest with those that qualify. You're the, basically the way it's listed in terms of our outreach, can you just share a little bit more about the Chamber of Commerce? Because we have a lot of Chamber of Commerce and I just don't want us to make an assumption. When you say outreach, who are you notifying?
You have an email address that we send that notice inviting bid along with the link to Open Gov. And I can, I can share that with you on the Friday update.
I was just curious because I think we presented it. And it would just be good to explain what that means because we have a lot of Chamber of Commerce in the city and what that process looks like. Because outreach could mean we're sending an email, hey, you know, we have this opportunity. But then we don't really give them an opportunity in terms of days to follow up. That RFP could be expiring within five days or maybe 24 hours, depending on our outreach. So I just wanted to make sure we have clarification around that. And then current approved vendors, is, are the, is the vendor list open to the public? Do we buy categorization, like who are those vendors? Is that something that we share?
It's not something that we have posted anywhere, but it's something we can entertain, certainly.
And then Open Gov Vendor Data Bank. Does that also include maybe companies that have N A I C S codes that might qualify for being small disadvantaged businesses?
Absolutely. We can run a classification report that actually shows the number of vendors of outreach and the different mebby weebies that they apply in.
So just a thought, that could be an opportunity for maybe businesses that might not have the financial backing or maybe the infrastructure, but they can be a part of some type of mentorship program with a company that is larger in nature and has that code, but they're through SBA, Small Business Administration. Just trying to think about those, just exploring those ideas, especially for companies that might be local, but they don't have the bandwidth, like maybe the larger companies. So something to consider.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Ms. Husky?
Thank you. My first question's around the, the bonds. All of these, the three bond requirements are all required by law or this district requirements?
They're part of the public contract code.
And so Mr. Tillman had mentioned about getting their money back. If, for those who do, and are small businesses, for those who do bid, if they don't get the bid, are, do we refund their 10% normally?
The bid bond, they have to pay for that bid bond, the surety company. So that isn't recouped. There's a percentage of that. However, if they submit a check, a cashier's check to hold that, if they're unable to acquire that bid bond, we absolutely return that.
And then is this for, like, I know some of this came up when we were looking at the DJs that were being approved. Do they also have to have bid bonds, like for DJs? So it's not for like, it's more for larger contracts?
Yes. Formal bidding opportunities.
Is there a dollar threshold to where we need these certain bonds? Like if it's, if it's a service that's over so much or?
If they, they would have to, they'd have to go into a formal bid, which would be $109,300. When you mentioned like the master agreements, I believe that was brought up last time. Those would be for smaller, would call like a micro purchase, typically under $10,000. Those don't require multiple quotes, although to get the, make sure the district is getting the best value, we like to get multiple quotes. But that doesn't mean that we have a school site who might say, hey, I have so-and-so's service and we put that through, as long as they meet the other requirements, the W nine, the DOJ, and insurance, we can definitely process those, would not fall into this formal bid.
And then my second question, you talked under the DIR about having to use prevailing wage. Are we using project labor agreements? Is that something we have entertained?
I'm not quite sure about that. I can double check on that for you. I know that when we advertise these public works bids, we are in compliance with Senate Bill 854, which means we have to register for DIR. They have to pay prevailing wage. Those different requirements for public workshops and we are prevailing, we are using cupka. So that gives us a little bit different threshold.
Can we look into project labor agreements on some of our?
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Husky. Ms. Rosales Medina?
That's definitely a great one to look into. I also noticed that the, that it's mentioned here that you can also advertise within the website. Have we done that?
Advertise on Open Gov and there's a link that's always there on our district webpage, purchasing page.
Okay, all right. And then so I guess I also have a question as a follow-up. You, you mentioned that it's with the bonds, that it's a public contract. Who created the public contract? Is that through the state or federal government or is that through the district?
That is a state, public contract code.
The, the state public contract. Okay. And also maybe you can provide that language as well, so I can see what they're, you know, like I, we hear from lawyers, may, must, it makes a huge difference. And, and the thing is that we want to look at, for me personally, we don't want to set the standard low, but we want to look at how we can maneuver the minimums so that way we can also hire local, if it's possible. But like I said, once we see the actual language, because even right here with the competitive building, it's in italic blue, it, it doesn't really specify any restrictions. And so I, and you know, competitive building protects the public. It gives you examples of what, what's the purpose of it, but it doesn't really tell you anything. And even with the current process for award, all of these steps, is that also through the state and federal government or is that through the district?
That's that we've taken to advertise?
No, no, like for instance, the current process for award on page eight. Is that also each of these line items, fingerprint, all of these certificates? Of course, we want to have that, the bonds, all of those are part of the, the state and federal government?
Let me double check on that and see if it's specific to our district or if it's larger.
Yeah. And so the thing is, my whole point is I want to get to the bare minimum, what we're allowed to do at the state and the federal government, and then kind of move from there. Because I know, like we mentioned earlier, the administrative regulations, those are district policies or district regulations that we can change and adjust. And so if we can, you know, just bring that to me, to the board as well of what those minimums are, so then we can kind of move from there. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Any other questions? All right, hearing seen none. Ms. Koenig, again, thank you to you and your team for both presentations. Appreciate and fielding all our questions. All righty, folks, we will move on to 8.0 mandated policy revisions. 8.1 Adoption of Board Policy 4115, Evaluation and Supervision. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves and adopts Board Policy 4115, Evaluation and Supervision.
Moved.
Second.
It was moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Savio. Same discussion. All right, hearing seen none. Students, we will be calling on you for a vote on this. All right. So I will start with Ms. Victoria Chavez.
Aye.
Ms. Eden Nachoa.
Aye.
Ms. Vasquez.
Aye.
All right, rest of the board will vote now electronically. Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to 8.2. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves and adopts Board Policy 4315, Evaluation and Supervision.
Moved.
Second.
It was moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Savio. Same discussion. Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. We'll start with our students, board members. Ms. Victoria Chavez?
Aye.
Ms. Eden Nachoa?
Aye.
Ms. Vasquez?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Rest may vote now. All right, motion carries. Moving on to 9.0, Action Items 9.1. Personnel Report Number Five, dated September 19th, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations.
President? Moved.
It was moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Rosales Medina. What was it? Oh, is that Ms. Alexander? All right, I was trying to, I wasn't sure on that one. I was looking to see if you'd give me a visual over there. I know. Little whisper in the corner there. Come on, a little more, a little more, folks. I know it's
Second.
Thank you very much, Ms. Alexander. All right, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All right, students? Hearing and seeing none. All right, students, we'll move over to you. Student board members, Ms. Victoria Chavez.
Aye.
Ms. Eden Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Vasquez.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Rest may vote now. Okay, motion carries, moving on to 9.2. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the fiscal year 2022, 2023 unaudited actual financial report as presented.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Husky, second by Vice President Tillman. Any discussion? Vice President Tillman.
I just want to take this opportunity to say that it's just good to be in a good financial place. It's not always this way, so I just want to celebrate the fact that we have money and it's not in a, a bad financial times. And it's just amazing that for the past nine years, we haven't had a downturn. I've never seen anything like it and never thought we ever would. So just want to celebrate the good times.
All righty, Ms. Tillman, and we will, as we can, so be fiscally wise and prudent in the future. All right, we will go ahead and move forward with our voting. Ms. Victoria Chavez.
Aye.
Eden Ochoa, Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Vasquez.
Aye.
Rest may vote now. All right, motion carries, moving on to 9.3. Approval district appropriations limit calculations for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the adoption of the GAN limits and does hereby declare the appropriations in the budget for the 2022, 2023, and 2023, 2024 fiscal years do not exceed the limitations imposed by Proposition 4.
Vote.
Second.
It was moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Savios. Any discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and vote. Oh, wait, Ms. Husky's light came on. Ms. Husky.
Apologies. Yesterday, when I met with the student board members, they were asking me about this and I could not explain it to them. So could someone explain this?
I will be more than happy to defer to Mr. Koenig about GAN limits.
This isn't, this would be in reference to having to not have reserves above 10%. So you have to, you have to basically spend it as, as close to, not zero, but under 10%, you can have as unassigned reserves.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Koenig.
Thank you, Mr. Koenig. All righty, that was a good question. I believe it was motion and second, so we'll go ahead and vote, starting with Ms. Victoria Chavez.
Aye.
Ms. Eden Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Vasquez.
Aye.
All right, rest may vote now. Thank you. Okay, motion carries, moving right along, 9.4. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves and adopts board policy 0420.4 charter school authorization.
Moved. Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Savios, second by Ms. Alexander. Any discussion? Hearing seeing none, we will move right along and vote. Student board members, Ms. Victoria Chavez.
Aye.
Ms. Eden Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Vasquez.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Rest may vote now. Okay, motion carries, moving on to 9.5. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves and adopts board policy 0420.41 charter school oversight.
Moved. Second.
It was moved by Ms. Husky and second by Ms. Savios. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Ms. Chavez.
Aye.
Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Vasquez.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Rest may vote now. Okay, motion carries, moving on to 9.6. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves and adopts board policy 0420.42 charter school renewal.
Moved.
It was moved by Ms. Alexander, second by Ms. Husky. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. We'll start with Ms. Chavez.
Aye.
Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez.
Aye.
Very good. Rest may vote now. Okay, motion carries, moving on to 9.7. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves and adopts board policy 0420.43 charter school revocation.
Moved. Second.
It was moved by Ms. Savios, second by Ms. Husky. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Ms. Chavez.
Aye.
Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Vasquez.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Rest may vote now. Motion carries, moving on to 9.8. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves and adopts board policy 7160 charter school facilities.
Moved. Second.
Been moved by Ms. Savios, second by Ms. Rosales Medina. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Students, we'll start with you, Ms. Chavez.
Aye.
Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Vasquez.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Rest may vote now. Okay, motion carries, moving on to 10.0, 10.1 approval consent list.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Savios. Any discussions or items to be pulled? All right, I am hearing and seeing none, it looks like. Yes? Okay, very good. Let's go ahead and vote on the consent agenda list as drafted. We'll start with Ms. Chavez.
Aye.
Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
Ms. Vasquez.
Aye.
Very good. Rest may vote now. All right, motion carries, moving on to 11.0 reports and comments by union organizations. 11.1 San Bernardino Teachers Association. Good evening. Well, all right, look at that. Wow. What an applause. Wake us up. Thank you.
Good evening, President Wyatt.
Good evening.
Vice President Tillman, Superintendent Ariano, members of the board and cabinet. I'm Ashley Vida Salcola, president of the San Bernardino Teachers Association, and I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of our 3,000 members. First, I want to take a moment to thank Mr. Tillman and the rest of the board for once again providing the teacher allocation monies for all of our educators to spend on supplies for their classrooms and their students. We appreciate the continuation of this program so that we don't have to spend money out of our own pockets for our students. So thank you once again for that. I also am excited to announce that we have a tentative agreement with the district, and I want to thank the board for their leadership on that, so that we were able to accomplish this in a timely manner. I also want to thank Dr. Funches for leading the district team and Mr. Ariano for his leadership as well. And I would be remiss if I did not thank our amazing bargaining chair, Michael Peterson, and the rest of our negotiations team for their commitment and time during this process. They're all classroom teachers and they do give up time away from their students to negotiate on our behalf. So we sincerely appreciate them and we look forward to completing our ratification process later this month. And thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, and thank you to all our teachers out there. We appreciate you. All righty, moving on to 11.2 California School Employee Association. All righty, and we have this evening.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. We, we kind of see and hear you.
Yes, I do apologize. I'm, I'm there as best as I can be. I just want to say good evening, President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, board member, Superintendent Ariano, and members of the cabinet. I appreciate your time. I know it's only 8:10, but time goes fast. So just a quick update for CSEA, we're continuing to work through negotiations. We are addressing any and all issues as they arise in regards to contracts as well as mental health issues. We have our next chapter meeting tomorrow in person at the BOE. Give us a chance to meet with our new members from new employee orientations and what have you that have signed up. And we are also planning an event for our members to show our appreciation to them for all the hard work that they do and continue to do throughout the year. And more information will be forthcoming to our members in the chapter meeting and also through our newsletters that we send out at least twice a month. So thank you so much and have a great evening.
All righty, thank you. You do the same. All right, moving on to 11.3 Communication Workers of America.
No report.
Thank you very much. 11.4 San Bernardino School Police Officers Association.
No report.
Thank you very much. 12.0 reports and comments, 12.1 student board members. And we will start right over here with, who we've been starting with all night, and that'll be Ms. Victoria Chavez.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Victoria Chavez. I'm a junior at San Bernardino High. Recently, at, at my school, I've been working on bringing more mental health resources. I've gotten in contact with some itinerary councils from our school district and they're helping me on organizing lessons to bring into our advisory period or possibly an after-school workshop. And then other than that, we have our upcoming 20th Annual Mister and Mrs. Cardinal City Pageant this Saturday at San RiGino, not San Bernardino High School, sorry, at Indian Springs High School Performing Arts Center, which is organized by an incredible bilingual school outreach worker at San Bernardino High, Mr. Jamie Rios. We're so super thankful to have him and to organize this incredible event. And that is it, what I have for today. So thank you.
All righty, thank you very much. Moving on to Ms. Eden Ochoa. I love how you guys are all prepared so well over there.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Good evening. I am Tatiana Eden Ochoa, a student board member for the Cajon High School. I would like to say we're very glad about Mr. Espoleta. What a pleasure to bring someone new into our Cajon family. We have been waiting to see who our new VP has been for a while and glad to bring someone onto our campus. I'm pleased to be here for my second board meeting and represent the students in my district. Each meeting, I want to use that to make progress and share what has been done directly for our students. To start, I would like to give a little update on Cajon and Arroyo High Schools. The Cajon Girls Golf Team, the only girls golf team in the district, has started their season with several wins. Cajon hosted their first speech and debate tournament of the year, which involved over 200 students around the Citrus Belt League. And we're glad to have James Amori, Bruseta Lopez, Marco Diaz, and I received medals at this tournament. This Friday would be our homecoming football game where our Cajon cheerleaders will be receiving their national rings and we'll have our new float parade. Arroyo Valley High School was able to have their homecoming football game and was very successful with their homecoming this past week and have plans of doing a Halloween trunk or treat in the previous, in the next month. The PSAT has been available for signup all across our district for high school students and many have already registered. For the first objective that I mentioned in my previous board meeting, I wanted to talk about advocacy for human trafficking in San Bernardino. This has been an issue relevant to our community and affect the safety of students. This is why I found it important to speak on it. My first, second semester objective was help students with education on nicotine, specifically with vapes and cigarettes or any drug use in our district. Currently this month, I have talked with Mr. Martinez, our student advisor and student board advisor, and have been able to ask personally to sit and meet possibly with San Bernardino Sheriff's Department, San Bernardino's Police Department, and the Cal State Police Department and the School Police Department to figure out what they're doing in our district and how we can add on to that. I and our other student board members, Crystal Scott, were able to attend the first meeting at the Virtual Academy Task Force in San Bernardino to talk about our students have an alternative, alternative way to accessing their education. And through this, we asked about what students they currently were the most tailoring to. And they did a very good job of answering these questions and what methods of teaching are being used for them. I'm awaiting to attend the first upcoming meeting of the literacy task force. Several other student board members and students were able to go to the first student leadership advisory council of the year, which was previously, previously mentioned and run by Dr. Moss at the very beginning of this month. And our next meeting will actually not only have high school students, but middle school students. School has been very busy for me and many other students in our district, so I would just like to say I hope the very best for all of them, and thank you.
All righty, thank you. And now on to Ms. Vasquez.
Good evening, Board of Education and audience. My name is Silvana Vasquez, a senior at San Gregorio High School, and I want to thank everyone for dedicating their time to our San Bernardino City Unified School District. Before I begin, I would like to point out that I am currently the Youth Civic Engagement City Student Member in which I can give my input about how we can improve our city and how our city and SBCUSD can correlate to create a positive impact in our community for generations to come. I would like to start off by saying Happy Hispanic Heritage Month. This month commemorates all the Hispanic heroes who not only served our country, but served other countries as well. To all Hispanics who have sacrificed their time and their lives to provide for their family and our nation, thank you for what you do. Your hard work is always noticed and truly appreciated. I would like to give a huge congratulations to Ms. Vial, who is my vice principal at San Gregorio High School, for showing her care and her passion to help special education. Congratulations on this next step into your career. Next, I would like to acknowledge the hard work and progress our high schools have done. The San Gregorio High School football team has won every single football game of the season so far. Last year wasn't their greatest year, but they stepped up their game and showed that with hard work and dedication, anything is possible. So a shout out to all the players and coaches of the San G football team. I would also like to acknowledge girls and boys cross-country, girls tennis, girls volleyball, and boys water polo for a fantastic fall season so far. A big shout out to all the teachers, staff, and counselors at San Gregorio High School for pursuing academic success for students every day. Middle College High School has also started off with a great year. So far, they had a leadership trip to the mountains at the ropes course, which they said was successful. They also had a leadership trip to Disneyland and started their first official mock child. Starting in October, Middle College will be hosting their blood drive and they hope to have over 50 students to participate. I would also like to discuss the Student Leadership Advisory Council. The Student Leadership Advisory Council, also known as SLAC, is run by Dr. Moss and is a program in which students from all nine high schools can discuss any ideas or projects we'd like to see in schools. In SLAC, we get to discuss our input on our schools and prioritize the necessary things we need for our schools. SLAC is a great opportunity for students to feel heard and represented. It helps students give input about their schools and we provide solutions. As of now, our group's community pride and restorative practices are discussing projects for our campuses. Next month, we will be inviting middle schoolers to join us and give their input about their middle schools. We are excited to start the new year with positive ideas and a prominent future for our students. To end this off, I would like to say thank you to all the board members and the superintendent for giving me this opportunity to be a student board member and helping all schools feel heard through us student board members. Thank you.
Thank you, and well done, ladies. Excellent job. Very well done. Hard act to follow for us now. I hope, hope all of us were watching and listening. All right, on to 12.2 board members. And let me see who we're going to start with this evening. Uh-oh, maybe I don't have a list. I'll start to my right. Oh, wait, Ms. Rosales Medina, want to comment?
Just start. It'll be quick.
Go right ahead then, Ms. Rosales.
I thought you were.
We have a list sometime, but there's no list, so yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So I just wanted to have, you know, since Hispanic Heritage Month, we've also, sometimes when we celebrate Juneteenth, we have Asian Pacific Islanders, there's different heritages that we want to celebrate. Maybe we could bring the arts within the board meeting in the beginning, maybe have a performance, dance performance, poetry, music, some type of showing how proud we are of our district, that we are embracing diversity. And so this would be something maybe I could suggest. Maybe it may not happen every single time, but I would love to see, you know, just some enthusiasm with each of these heritage resolutions that we do pass. And a great example also is Juneteenth, that when it does come up, maybe just showing, you know, something that the students are able to come up with as an example. And then, of course, Hispanic Heritage Month. I think we still have time. It's until the mid of October, so maybe we can have something at the next board meeting.
I think we were also looking at Dia de los Muertos.
Dia de los Muertos, and there's several things that...
I know Cal State does a huge one, and we've talked about it in the past, and...
It could be just a presentation of arts. Like I said, it could be anything. Poetry, it could be something that they're able to showcase.
I'm waiting for the art contest. That's what I want.
Yeah.
And our kids have an art contest. I know at Cal State, they have a... Help me out. What's this school called? Say it again?
De Altar, and they have the calavera. They have...
Calavera?
Yeah, they have different...
I love those. Those are really cool. So, thank you, Ms. Mary Rhone Goodwin over there for helping me out. Alright, we'll keep moving to our left then. Ms. Grande, are you ready? The students are watching over there. I want you to know.
I still forget to push the button. Okay, well, I'm just really excited about sharing some things I have looked up and discovered. And then, I also have an ask. I looked into home and hospital and the educational code, and I really did want to make sure that you know where my mind is when I'm sharing all those things about the subacute. So, what I discovered was that home and hospital, according to the ed code, it was always meant for students with a temporary disability that makes attendance in regular classes, day classes, or alternative education in which the student is enrolled impossible or inadvisable. But it excludes students with exceptional needs. So, the purpose of home and hospital then was to provide instruction to students with a temporary disability in the student's home or the hospital, excluding state hospitals. So, there's a little space in there where our children, our students in the subacute fall in. And further, I found a lot other information that I did take deliberity to write it up so you can just read it on your own. My ask today then is, well, this is not a new issue. Let me finish what I had writing. Home and hospital, then according to the ECA, was always designed for temporary disabilities. So, students, our students with permanent lifelong disabilities and medical needs were never meant to live their entire life, daily life, in a hospital. These students are now marginalized, permanent guests of the hospital, as are the district teachers and staff. I located an article that mentions reasons and efforts that are being made to build what is now being called a school hospital. That means where there's more education going on along with the whole child. And although improvements have been made to change the children's hospital into a more human and inclusive place for young patients, the hospital setting still remains a dysfunctional place to host learning programs. Teachers assert that the causes responsible for this failure are mainly the inappropriateness and the lack of dedicated areas, the lack of teaching aids, and the priority of clinical activity over the didactic one, which is constantly interrupted. This I felt firsthand. There is a sense, moreover, there's a sense of marginality reported by teachers who should be actively involved in the therapeutic process established for children joined to their families. This means we're not part of the team to look at their medical record or talk to the parents about that. We're not allowed to do that. They report to feel like strangers whose presence is tolerated, and that was really the feeling that I get. Finally, it's crucial to deal with the lack of dedicated areas, lack of teaching aids, and constant interruptions from teaching activity. According to this study that I read, all these aspects represent stress indicator factors for teachers in hospitals. I will add here another human need for students and staff there. The sun on their faces, fresh air, scent of grass and trees, along with a teacher-staff break room of their own, plus a desk and a cushioned chair in an actual office area. There's a term now used by advocates for change. It's called "school hospitals." Loma Linda University has such a place that I know of, that I'm told. It's called Totally for Kids Children's Hospital. I would suggest all or maybe a few of us visit both the subacute here if you have not yet been, and the one in Loma Linda. My fellow board members, the ask today is for your support in just starting a conversation and pursuing this idea for an all-new children's hospital, a school hospital, and allowing a conversation with us and Dr. Gwen Rogers, our County Board Trustee. She and a few other individuals to begin. She has reached out to me in support of exploring these ideas and finding facts that could help make it happen. My hope is that the idea can capture the hearts and minds of those that absolutely could make the dream a reality. And I'll end this now by giving thanks to Lori Quarry for coming to me with her concerns two years ago about these issues that I didn't really understand until I chose to teach there my last year before retiring. I promised her, myself, and our students that I would be their voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grande. Vice President Tillman.
Very much, President Dr. Wyatt. First, I'd like to also say a Happy Hispanic Heritage Month. I attended a football game at San Bernardino High School. I was there for the first half, which was the best half. The other team came back to win by one point. But the team played great. The band sounded great, and the cheerleaders did a great job also. And it was just a, I want to commend the staff at San Bernardino High School, everybody that worked there, because it was a real nice atmosphere. So, I really enjoyed the game. I want to thank Dr. Rodriguez. I had a parent contact me at an establishment I go and eat at, and they were, it was an aunt that talked to me, but they were real concerned about a student at Arroyo Valley who's getting bullied. And I talked to Dr. Rodriguez. She contacted the principal. And when I went back into the restaurant, I didn't know the mother worked there, but she worked there also. And she came out and was very, very happy. I just want to make sure that we work on finding ways to allow students to contact district staff. I don't know what we have to do, an assembly, or something needs to happen where every year we say, "If you're being bullied, here's who you need to call." Because this student had been dealing with this since last school year and had never talked to anybody on campus. And because some people had told some people in that establishment when I was on the school board, they came out and talked to me about it. It was a really sad situation because the young lady was under a lot of stress. And it didn't take a whole lot to make it better. After Dr. Rodriguez got involved and contacted the site, they took the right steps, and things seemed to be going a lot better. But I just get the feeling that there's probably more students out there who are suffering and don't know how to reach out. So, Mr. Ariano, we can work on that. I think that's critical. I know the board did a thing where we provided our top 10 list. I would like to ask that, what we did last time, we compiled the whole list, had the board members number the different items, 1 through 10, and then turn it back in. And I was thinking we would also include the old list, also the ones you sent out. So, there might be a list of, the max is gonna be 80 items on there. But we go through and pick the top 10. We can bring back maybe the top 20 for discussion. And then, we'll make the whittle down the list. And then, I know one of the student board members got approval to agendize the concerns and issues of the time change. And maybe there's some things that we can tweak. So, I just want to make sure we do agendize that sooner than later so that, you know, we can have the discussion about what the change has created. And maybe there's some things we can tweak to make it a little bit better, but I don't want to lose sight of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Viles?
Thank you so much. I also want to start off by saying Happy Hispanic Heritage Weekend Month. Just really quickly, I just want to share that I was contacted by Dr. Rodriguez's department and scheduled an appointment, as I had requested, to do a visit with the Inland Career Education Center. Prior to that, I had gone to their Early Child Development Centers as well. So, I do want to just kind of share and report back. I was really, really, really impressed as well with the ICEC Center. They really gave us a rundown, a tour of, you know, the classes and the programs that they have over there. And just seeing, just seeing from one end of the spectrum to the other end of the spectrum, from early childhood, early development, to, you know, adulthood, really, adult education. And the fact that the staff there really understood the nuances that a lot of students, especially first-generation students, like really struggle with, with the small little things of, you know, getting nervous to walk onto a college campus, you know. Just wanted to share that. I was really impressed with their understanding of those things of students. So, thank you so much for, you know, taking the time and taking us out there. It also so happened that the Family Leadership Institute, FLI, the parent program was having their second day there, and I was able to jump in and say hello to the parents. It was really nice as well. In addition to that, I will be joining the walk tomorrow with the subacute unit. So, I look forward to that as well. And I would absolutely like to come and, you know, check out what Loma Linda has, you know, seeing one and the other, and really be part of those conversations as well, starting those conversations. So, thank you so much. And just really quickly, out of curiosity on that thing that Mr., on the bullying portion that Mr. Tillman brought, was by any chance the anti-bullying team summoned for that case, Dr. Rodriguez? Or was it handled differently?
That was handled differently?
Okay. So, I just wanted to say we have a great anti-bullying team, you know, in the district with the Positive Youth Development. And so, they didn't use it in this investigation. They were able to resolve it. But it is a great program. I remember a couple of years back when I first started, my shadowing portion of my, oh my gosh, my words are leaving me, of my master's program. When I first started shadowing, I came here to the district before being on the board, and I had the privilege to be able to shadow those ladies for a few months, really, and, you know, kind of going across the district. And they have a really, really wonderful program where they empower the students. So, if there's any way that in addition to providing students that information, if we can really support and get behind, you know, the work that these ladies do, I'm telling you, it's phenomenal. And I personally firsthand have seen improvement where, I mean, I don't want to, you know, talk about the details because that's part of the, how it works, but it's a great program. So, just wanted to, you know, really point that out as well. I think that is actually it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Viles. Ms. Chusky?
Thank you. I also visited ICEC. I'm not gonna repeat everything that Ms. Vial said, but it was fabulous and kudos to the staff and administration there. The Family Leadership Institute, I was honored to speak to them the first day. Kudos to Dr. Gonzalez and her team. There were a lot of parents there. I'm hoping that we'll do more and that we can get more parents to attend and wider diversity and reach out to our parents from other segments of our community to try to get them involved as well because I think it can help all parents. I'm also going to the subacute tomorrow. This will be my second visit there. I am 100% on the, we need to do something and to support our students in that program. I was blessed some years ago to go to the Loma Linda Children's Hospital. I think it was for Read Across America that I was there, reading to students. And it's bright and sunny and light in our subacute center. Our kids there are, it's dark and dreary and depressing. And so, I'm hoping that we can help, you know, with our students, help make some changes that are positive for kids. I want to, you know, we did a resolution for October on bullying, and I don't know if this, if you've seen in the news, but our Alexander Madison has been bullied through social media horribly, including requests that he, you know, that he killed himself over the last game. And I just want to denounce bullying in all of its forms and especially, you know, encourage our students not to use social media in such a negative way. I know Positive Youth Development, I was honored to work with them the year before last, before I retired, in doing the undercover anti-bullying teams and restorative conflict mediations. We have, thanks to Dr. Winslade from Cal State San Bernardino and Michael Williams, we have a very unique and effective program that I do think that we need to support and roll out more and get, you know, get a greater buy-in. Because it is, I mean, you know, adults are now modeling bullying behaviors for our children, and we have to stop it somewhere. It's not okay. It's not okay. I want to give kudos to, while we're on Positive Youth Development, to Dr. Moss and the Student Leadership Advisory Committee. It was all student-led this year. The student leadership team of the Student Leadership Advisory did a great job in conducting the meeting. So, kudos to, I know a couple of you are on that leadership team as well. You know, kudos to you for that meeting. One of the things I wanted to let you know is that they are conducting a late-start Google survey for our students. It's been sent out to all nine high schools. They've been getting a fairly decent response, but if we can encourage the students to respond to that late-start survey, I think that's gonna give us really vital data. I think I mentioned before that when Ms. Viles and I went to the delegate assembly last year, their whole, that whole delegate assembly was about late start. And they had, they had broke us up into groups to roundtable around late start, and of course, we hadn't started yet. So, I think this will be very valuable for us going into AEC this year and for our student board members who will be going to the student portion to be able to talk and to bring this data with them. So, if we can all support and back that survey up. Last but not least, when we decided to have a student board member program, one of the things we talked about is us mentoring the students, and we have found a way for us to be able to do that, that I think will work with all of their schedules and all of our schedules. One of the things that we want is for them to be prepared for their board meetings. And so, last night, we had our first initial agenda review with the student board members. So, we're going to be sending out to you a signup sheet for the board meetings through the rest of this school year to sign up. All we're asking for is one hour of your time. And, you know, with seven of us through the whole year, it's not gonna be a whole lot of Mondays, but to meet with them the night before the board meeting via Zoom for about an hour, from like 5:00 to 6:00. If you have to modify the time a little bit, we can work with the students of that time. You'll meet with the three board members that will be coming on Tuesday. And literally, we just went through the agenda, item and item. They asked questions. And like I said, I couldn't answer all their questions around the game limit, so I said, "We'll bring that up," you know, "today." But we just went through it all. They asked their questions. And so, some of the things they didn't need to ask today because we were able to do like some of the consent items last night and help them understand what we were doing there. So, I think it's a great way for each of us to have a one-on-three time with those students, for you guys to get to know them, to be able to mentor them, to talk to them, encourage them, support them, and then, you know, and get to know them better because they are nine really incredible students. And so, like I said, Karen will be sending us signup. Please, 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 so I don't have to harass you at the next board meeting. If you would sign up, I will definitely need somebody to do it October 3rd because I'm not available on October 2nd for that meeting. So, if you are, if you could let us know tonight, that would be great.
Thank you, Ms. Chusky. Ms. Alexander?
Good evening. Good evening to the board, Superintendent Ariano, and the cabinet. I had an opportunity, and so did Mary Ellen, have an opportunity to go to the Amazon event that was put together by Mr. Ken Martinez at Anton Elementary. Urbita was also there in Arrowhead and thought it was a great event, so thank you for making hope happen. It was awesome. Through all of the postings and curiosity out there, some teachers did speak up and principals want to know how they can be a part of it. So, I don't know if that's something we could share with other schools or if they were a part of it and they just weren't physically there. But that was just a question that came up, and I didn't have an answer for them. So, I'd just like to be able to share it out with them because I think that there is some goodness with just the overall outreach that Amazon is providing our community. I think it's great. Secondly, I also attended an event, Excelencia...
Latina.
Excelencia Latina, which was the first day of National Hispanic Month. Excelencia Latina, which was the first day of National Hispanic Month. So congratulations, and it was a really great event. We had two parents that received awards, which was awesome. And definitely great to see us in the community. I think we're the only school district with two, two awardees. All the other school districts had one. So something to be proud about, making San Bernardino great.
And the only one with a male parent.
Really?
Recognized, yeah.
And our very own Myra Sevales is on the board. So congratulations to a great event. Also wanted to mention, it's already been shared, but I wanted to provide a little bit more detail about it. Mr. and Ms. Cardinal is the 20th year. So I think that's something to be recognized for Mr. Jamie Rios, who's done a lot in the community related to this particular pageant. And he has a story to tell because there's been plenty of students, I believe, that have gone through this pageant, either awardees or they've done, gone on to do great things. So definitely hope that we're all out there to support. But I also want to make sure we give recognition to a teacher, I believe he's a teacher, is he an educator or administrator right now? I'm not sure. I just know he's at San Bernardino High School. So just want to make sure that we support him and recognize him for all his hard work and his outreach in the community. Had a couple of items that I wanted to bring up that have been brought to my attention. So homelessness plagues our city. And I get the question a lot, as you know, it's a big issue here. What are our wraparound services? And I know we have it. We have a great family engagement team under Dr. Rodriguez. The, it's the question of what's out there in terms of our collaboration with the city. So I don't think it's a representation of our school district. It's a matter of just getting the communication out there because the question keeps coming up. And maybe the opportunity with the collaboration with what the city is doing, maybe that's something we can consider. Because sometimes people don't know who to call. They just call who they know. And they might not know about those services or where to get them. So just something to consider. Another one is our music program. I know we have an excellent music program. The question is, how are we rolling it out? Or what, what is the level of prioritization in all the schools, primary and secondary? And is it equitable? I believe that our music teachers aren't at every school. They might share different schools. But just need to provide probably a little bit more detail around that and just what kind of support we can provide for those schools that might not have the same type of music program or maybe not the same level of interest. We can also pulse and see what we can provide. And I, that's it in terms of those items. And then I wanted to go back to the clarification on the procurement piece. The codes 2011, that was clear. But then there was another one that was shared, 26, 2000, I don't know, it was 2,651 or 20,651. We just need clarification on what number it is. And that's it. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you, Ms. Alexander. And I believe it's back to me. So I'll try to keep it very short and sweet. We just, this week, we had a really nice town hall meeting over at Arrowhead Elementary School. And I want to thank Mr. Comnick and his team again, as well Superintendent Ariano and the rest of our executive cabinet were there. I know we had talked about potentially having a Samuel County Fire Department built on part of that school. And they put, they put on quite a presentation, just the display, the graphics that they brought, the renderings that it would look like, as well as two to three major upgrade projects that the county Board of Supervisors, Joe Baca Jr., has, you know, dedicated to our school if we were to move on with the project. So it was a really great presentation, outstanding job. Want to thank Samuel County Fire Department, as well as Chief Muncie, and then Board of Supervisors, Joe Baca Jr., and all the families that came, students and parents that attended. And they actually selected the areas that they would like some of the improvements. And there are like five different improvements. And that was a lot of fun for them as well. And the improvements are outstanding. And if you've been to Arrowhead Elementary, I will say this, it needs some improvements. So I want to voice my support for that program, and I hope that you do as well. American School and University, some of you may or may not see this or read this magazine. If you're kind of like me, probably don't. But it's more about architecture and design. And some of my friends know I love to read this magazine. So whenever Samuel City Unified is in here, they make sure I get a copy. So within the magazine, our Pacific High School CTE Transportation Advanced Technology Center was recognized nationally with a special citation. This is the third or fourth time since I've been on the board that Samuel City Unified School District has been in this publication. And I'll tell you, you know, this is a national publication and national recognition on the highest level in regards to architecture and design. And I'll, I'll be honest, I haven't even had a chance to get over there yet to see the transportation program. Some of you may or may not have. But I could pass this back and forth. I want it back. No, I'm just kidding. And you can take a look at the pictures of this facility. You know, we have a saying on the Athletic Strategic Planning Committee, world-class facilities. And that is a huge challenge, let me say that, to meet world-class facilities. And this is an example, though, of what I see as a world-class facility for our kids right here in Samuel City Unified School District. So a huge shout out to Mr. Comnick and his team, Mr. Tom Pace as well, for, you know, coming up with such a design. I know this was probably done many years ago, but they're the folks that are here now. So thank you to the folks that thought about this probably five or 10 years ago as well. I know Ms. Medina Rosales, you're big on the transportation project as well. So I know your ideas and thoughts are a part of this too. So, but great job to them. And, and again, I say this often, we lead the change and transformation of the city. We really do, with our facilities, with our designs, with our architecture, with our construction. We're getting ready to see it right here behind the BOE. I imagine when that is done, it's going to blow us away. And maybe we could revitalize our downtown right through us. I have a lot more to talk about, but I'm going to leave it at that for right now. We did have an event that's a little bit of Samuel, but more, probably more Samuel County Elementary School is now swinging for scholarships this past weekend, Saturday at Shannon Hills. I want to thank, I wish I knew her name off the top of my head, the new owner of Shannon Hills, who also owns the Arrowhead Country Club. Can we say her name? Again?
Vario Nguyen.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Alexander. And just, you know, them reinvesting in our, our city as well. And I think we should always say thank you to our community partners when they're doing that, especially when they're working with the districts. So I'm putting it out there for Samuel City Unified School District as well. I know we do a management, usually fundraising golf tournament, but they're working with us, they're working with our districts. And again, that's community partnership at its best. So those are my comments. Superintendent Ariano?
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for hanging in there on, on a very productive board meeting. So I just want to start off by thanking Terry Comnick and his staff on two great presentations. Really appreciate how easy you make very complex items sound and appreciate the follow-up that you'll provide to members of the board on the RFP process. Special thanks out to Amazon for their donations to our schools. And I just wanted to thank Ken Martinez, Melanie McGrath, Felicia Noel, Dennis Walbert, our communications department. For what a wonderful event that we were able to experience. And thank you for the opportunity. Let me say a few words. I know Felicia said a few words on behalf of the district. Mary Ellen was there, Mayor Tran and Juan Figueroa, Councilman of Third Ward. So it was a really nice community event, Ken. So well done, man. It's great to see us all working together. And I also want to piggyback on what President Wyatt shared. The meeting that was put on, town hall meeting regarding the proposed idea of putting a fire department using, utilizing some of Arrowhead Elementary School. If you remember, it was the board's request that the district reach out to the staff and the community. So I'm happy to report that both of those meetings went very well, very well received. And so we will be working with Joe Baca and the county supervisors to put together some ideas on how this is going to move forward and timeline. So I'll keep you informed on that proposed project. And as Scott said, Joe Baca Jr. is willing to up the ante by adding two or three improvement projects to the school as a way of saying thank you. So the community got to vote, the kids that were there got to vote. So thank you, guys, for the idea of including the staff and community. That's really going to be a, a nice collaborative project. I also want to thank the San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, specifically Carlos Two Bears Gonzalez, who is from the Cal State University of San Bernardino's First Nations Center, for inviting us to the California Native American Day Luncheon yesterday. We were able to attend, and I was asked to share a few words where I was able to share the great work that our district has been doing for the last 38 years with our Title VI Indian Education Program. And what was nice is being able to watch Cinder Weber, who's been our specialist, Native American Student Specialist, be recognized by Seminarian James Ramos. It was a great moment for her. So it was accolades to Cinder, if you're watching. Congratulations, you did a great job representing the district. And then I continue, board, to meet with community partners and attend school sites. So since our last board meeting, I've had the opportunity to meet with Councilman Ben Reynosa, who is the Councilman of Fifth Ward, who is a graduate of Cajon High School. Really, he has an amazing story that he's shared to me. And I told him, you know, we need to tell that story. Met with former mayor and former judge, Pat Morris, to get his perspective and had the opportunity to meet with the Make Hope Happen Foundation Board. So I wanted to thank Nikki Detman and Chairman Michael Rivera for giving me the opportunity to share kind of where we're going as a district and the, and the processes that we will be going through the next couple of months to put together a multi-year vision. So I appreciate the invitation. And then, you know, had the opportunity now to be at Marshall, Arrowhead, Kim Bark, Jones Elementary, Mount Vernon, North Verdemon, and Ingram Schools since we last met. So getting to see old friends, getting to see what's going on with instruction, looking at what our, our needs are, not only in the classrooms but at the school sites. And good, good things are happening out there. So those conversations continue to happen. I want to publicly thank all of the staff members and the community members who attended the various superintendent forums that we had to collect anecdotal feedback. I thought those sessions were genuine. They were honest. We received some great feedback that the Board of Education and I will be considering in the next couple of months that will help us develop our multi-year vision. But I just want to thank the community and staff. Now, the opportunities for feedback don't stop there. So I want to announce two other opportunities that continue. First of all, this week, we're using the Thought Exchange application to solicit the feedback from our high school students. So they will be participating in the Thought Exchange opportunity this week. So looking forward to hearing from our direct customers about what they believe our, our school district should keep, what needs polishing, and what's missing. You will also notice that there is a link open on our website for our community to continue to provide feedback for us this week. And I know Mary Rowan's working on some blasts for the community and also an email that will go out to all of our staff members with the link to Thought Exchange. So we still have some time to get feedback from everyone who wasn't able to attend those forums. But I want to thank President Scott Wyatt for being each and every one. It was important for the community to see the board president and superintendent together. So I appreciate and thank you, the board members who were able to attend. I know you're very busy. So when you carve out a few minutes, I really appreciate that. I'm very grateful. So thank you for that. I will be attending the, my first Mr. and Mrs. Cardinal City Pageant this Saturday. So I'm looking forward to that event. And I do want to piggyback on just thanking Jamie Rios. You know, I, I didn't realize that this has been going on for 20 years and that he's a one-man show, who's been putting this program together and reaching out for resources. So I want to publicly thank just Jamie for a job well done for 20 years and to let him know that I'm going to be meeting with him soon because I think he needs some support, not only from the school side, but from the district and from all of us. So...
He worked a ticket booth at the game Friday. So he's everywhere.
Yeah, he, he's a good man. So Jamie, if you're watching, thank you, we love you. And we're going to get you some support because you've been putting on a great program. And the last thing I, last thing I want to share is also a thank you to SBTA and our school district negotiations teams for reaching a tentative agreement. They worked hard, they worked professionally, they worked positively. So I want to thank Barbara and Ashley for their leadership, but also Marcus and your team for your leadership, and the Board of Education for your leadership, putting together these three energies, got us to a, to a tentative agreement that's fair, that's positive, and we hope will be well-received and ratified by our colleagues. And I, I do want to make a couple of comments regarding the bullying. You know, these are good points that come up, so thank you for the questions. And ladies, you did a great job with your speeches today in keeping us informed about what's going out there, what's happening out there at the high school and what we should be focused on. Couple of things I want to mention. The undercover bullying program that was mentioned by Board Member Sevales is a CSBA Golden Bell finalist. So obviously, it's well-recognized. We have the data that shows that it works. So we're very excited about the proactive measures that Marlene Bykandova and then her team have done. So we're very excited about that. Mr. Tillman, the example that you provided was more about an issue of kids not knowing or maybe fearing reporting. So one thing that I'd like to bring up and maybe challenge our team is I know in, in my previous district, we used an app called Sprigio, which is, it was an app that people could use to report. So you don't necessarily have to go to somebody, but it was a space where someone could report and not feel maybe the embarrassment or maybe the hurt or maybe the fright. The report could go in online, and then somebody would be able to reach out to the, to the student or the family. So it just made the process a little bit easier than having that cumbersome moment of meeting somebody face to face. So we'll be looking into that. So thank you very much. And I appreciate all of the great work that our staff, certificated, classified, management, our parent volunteers, everyone is doing. The district is humming, and, and I'm very proud to be here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Superintendent Ariano. We'll now move on to 13.0, some of our board members' requests, 13.1, review requests. Ms. Mountain Tag?
Good evening. First request is from Ms. Rosales Medina. She asked how many SBC USD families would be impacted by the proposed Inland Valley Development Agency project? There were follow-ups from several...
Can you add students as well? Because I want to know exactly how many students will affect the attendance rate or not the attendance rate, the enrollment rate?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
And there were follow-ups from several board members from the procurement presentations that Terry Comnick and his team will provide to the board via Friday update. Ms. Rosales Medina asked or invited students to showcase their talents such as arts, poetry at board meetings, for heritage and other, for diversity. And Mr. Tillman asked that the district annually communicate to students how to report bullying. Ms. Sevales and Ms. Chahusky, in addition to providing information to students about bullying, they are requesting to support and promote Positive Youth Development's anti-bullying Ms. Alexander asked would, or would like information about the music program in the district? How are we ruling it? And is it equitable? And those are the requests for tonight.
All righty. Thank you, Ms. Mountain Tag. Does that sound accurate? Everything sound good? All righty, folks, it is now 14.0, 14.1 adjournment.
I can't.
It's been moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Ms. Sevales. Everyone have a wonderful evening. Drive safely, take care, and as always, may God bless you all.